Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Library Trustees Meeting of Tuesday, December 26, 2023, to order at 6:45 PM. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? Yes.
Yeah.
Call for a motion for the minutes?
So...
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
I don't know if now would be a good time to follow up on something in the report.
Is it listed on the agenda?
It's in the minutes.
No, but is this listed?
No, I don't see it listed. I don't believe in the agenda. So we did want to follow up on the minutes.
Okay, what's the question?
Okay. It says, I guess Cameron's gonna meet for the library facilities assessment contract with Odin Zello. She was gonna meet with Lisa Green.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that under the building.
Oh, you will. Okay, thank you.
Who seconded?
Linda.
Linda, okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, who's going to? I mean, Cameron?
Director's report. Some notes about programming. So we had the first Hanson Holiday Fest on December 2nd, and it was a fairly warm night. So there was a lot more people. This is our first one, so we actually ran out of kits in like the first few minutes. It was the Hanson Holiday Fest on the Green, Town Hall Green.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, we were just stunned how many people there. It was like, there must have been like 300 people or more. So next time, so we definitely learned, learning experience. But, you know, we, I think we probably did get about 100 people to the table. We actually left after an hour because, you know, we didn't really have anything else that was...
Yeah.
So...
You missed the fireworks. They were amazing last year. You missed fireworks over.
Planning on doing some more teen service projects because we had one for senior, kits for Hanson seniors, and we got a lot of positive feedback. The kids, you know, the parents and kids really loved it and just really felt like they were contributing to the community, and that was really, really positive. So positive feedback too for the felted class. We're gonna have them back again, Papa Bart School. Cookie decorating, the half day hangout, kids love that. That was great. Coming up in January, I've listed some of the programs and you can see the calendar. But we have Barn again. That was so popular. I think, but we're gonna be definitely doing more in future too because the waiting list, I think, is already like packed with, you know, it's full and then the waiting list is full as well. So we have a couple of the great programs you can see. So we're very busy winter coming up.
Can I speak to, ask a question about programs?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's always clear when different programs are sponsored or funded by the foundation. And I know sometimes space is limited, but we want to make sure we're promoting and maintaining membership and people supporting the foundation. I was thinking maybe if space is an issue, which I'm guessing sometimes it is, an asterisk might be put next to the title and then down the bottom says, "This program was sponsored by the foundation," something like that.
Well, we do, like, whenever we do our program, we have like bimonthly program meetings, and we always go through and try to figure out like who's sponsoring what program. So right, right now, like in January, I don't think we have anything.
Okay. Just recently though, it doesn't seem like it's clear all the time. If you can just be aware of it.
Yeah.
Okay, true.
Because I thought there was a program that you had published recently on Facebook that you copied the foundation because it was being sponsored by the foundation.
Oh, I've seen, I've seen some, but it didn't seem like it was being done consistently. So I just wanted to ask if Cameron...
Like, was there one that you could think of?
Not in particular. But when I was going through for the annual letter for the membership drive, it wasn't always clear finding, "Oh, I didn't know it was sponsored by the foundation." I came across a couple instances like that.
Okay, all right.
And a lot of the attendance is limited because the person can only cover so many people at a time.
Yeah, depending on the program, yeah. So a couple of building things. Both, I applied for a $15,000 grant through the Rural and Small Library Association to see if we can change our lighting to LED. So it would be the interior and exterior lights. So I spoke to Charlie about that. He had somebody come in and give us a quote, an estimate. So we'll see if by February 9th, if that's approved.
And does that include the senior center?
Yes, it's the whole entire building. Yeah, the grant portion, so actually there's, there's also a grant that the installer of the lights can get through, like, I think like National Grid or something. So that portion, because this would only cover the library portion, and anything from senior center would be covered under that. It's kind of like, not like a matching exactly, but they could get another portion of money for that.
Were you able to pick the kind of LED light? Like, some LED light is so glaring and bright.
Yeah, we, well, yeah.
It's not really conducive to a self library.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, this was just like a general rough number that they gave us because the grant, you had to tell them like kind of roughly what amount you want. And so once, if we get it and we go forward...
If they're not the ones that tell you what to install, you take that, okay.
Right, yeah, yeah. They just give you the funds for that project and then you can figure out later what you want, you know, the specifics. A couple things that were... Library of things, we've added several more items. The companion cat and dog is really cute. We're really excited too about our Tony box. Yeah. So that's a, it's a screen-free digital audio player, and it comes with, well, they're called Tonys. So they're like little like figurines that you kind of plug into the top of it, and they, they're like self-contained, like music and stories. So that should be, you know, Julia's working on adding those in.
Is it for adults or for children?
Children, yeah. So, yeah, so we have, any other questions about anything in the report?
No, that's great.
Okay.
Who was the other library that was getting the surplus, Charlie?
Um, I forget the name. It's somewhere out in Western Mass, I think. Yeah. I forget the exact name. Julia had dealt with them.
How were they arranging shipping?
So they came in with a rental truck.
Oh.
And, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. So they took like the big, huge, long one. Couple of the smaller ones, so...
Oh, that's great.
All right. So we can move on to the draft of the town report article. So there was a couple minor changes since the last meeting, but if it looks good to go, then to do a vote to approve.
I want we approve the updated draft.
Any, what, um, second? I'll start. What was this?
To approve the town report.
Draft, yeah. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Who seconded?
Two seconds.
Library director evaluation, I don't know if you would...
She still hasn't answered me, so I sent her another email today.
And she's actually on vacation this week.
Oh, okay.
So she won't be back till...
She was on vacation when I was there. But I sent an email, and so...
I know she is, they're working on trying to get like evaluations like townwide for like that kind of ongoing again.
Well, this email, I beefed it up and said, you know, basically, we prefer to do it when she's requiring for everyone else because we don't want to work on it twice. So, okay, so that's on...
So I'll put that back on the agenda for January.
Yeah, put it on the agenda for next month and we'll see what she says.
All right. New business. So usually we vote to, at least tentatively, to set the meeting dates for next year. So I just proposed for the 4th Tuesday, all the way from January to November, the 4th Tuesdays. And then December, the 4th Tuesday is Christmas Eve, so obviously that's not gonna work. But if we did December 17th, that's the third. Because the 31st is also, you know, we don't want to be here really late probably on New Year's Eve. So if the 17th works, if we could just tentatively set those.
I prefer not November 26th, a couple days before Thanksgiving. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but...
Oh, yeah, because it's, yeah, that's...
I prefer a week earlier. I think we might have done that one year at least.
I think we did, yeah.
If that works better.
19th.
I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed trustee meetings January through October, with November changing to the 19th and December being the 17th.
Second.
Any more concerns?
You're gonna have to wait a minute. I could put that in afterward if you want to.
That's fine. I don't want to miss my time. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
And then for closings, we have all the holidays. And then the, we typically, we've done the Saturday before Labor Day, which is August 31st. Saturdays in July and August changed to nine to one. This year, Christmas Eve is a Tuesday, and the union gets from noon on. So I know in the past we've done nine to 12. So I thought that would work again.
I was gonna, the other two dates we had already talked about is, okay, on October 31st, I mean, Town Hall obviously closes at 5 o'clock that day.
Right, so this, because this year Town Hall, it was a Tuesday.
Yes.
So they closed at 6 o'clock.
Right.
And then we, we stayed open, but staff that worked that night got extra time off.
Right. So on that day, I mean, we could close at 6 o'clock if that's what they do on the 31st.
So, well, so the Town Hall... Right, so Town Hall is a Thursday, so they won't be open. But I didn't know if we wanted to...
They close at 5.
I mean, I'm fine with, I think the staff are too staying open that night.
Okay, all right.
But I didn't know if anybody felt strongly that we should close for... For Halloween, because it's late that night, but...
But the young kids are gonna go out early anyway and then go home.
Go, yeah, okay.
So they wouldn't be coming.
But he leaves for Meyer Hostet, so...
The what? Oh, yeah. All right, so, yeah, we'll keep that.
The 31st.
Then the 31st is a Tuesday. So that, I'm not sure what Town Hall is gonna do. It's, you know, obviously...
The 31st.
The New Year's Eve is a Tuesday.
Well, you're not gonna stay open till 8 on Tuesday.
No. But one year, I don't know what day it was, but we did close early.
Yeah.
But I was thinking that day, we would normally be open seven hours. So if we closed at 5, say...
On Tuesday, December 31st?
Should be open at 10, to still have the, like, the whole day for people to come in?
Yeah, we could do that.
I'm thinking instead of, you know...
Instead of, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised, I don't know.
But couldn't we do that with the staff schedules that way?
Oh, that's a point, too.
Yeah.
I think it might make it more confusing, actually.
Than just closing a couple of hours earlier.
And I would say the 3 or 5, depending on possibly what Town Hall is.
I think you have to go...
I mean, we can wait and hold off and see, you know, the future. But, so, tentative, maybe, like, I can ask Lisa to, at the point, and see what, if there's any ideas for what they might be doing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 proposed closings with Tuesday, December 31st, more than likely going along with Town Hall based on what Lisa has to say.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Teresa's not good, right?
Yes.
So, start off with the facility assessment update. So after the November meeting, I did call, it's Odin's L.O., and notified them that they were selected. And I spoke to Lisa as well. She recently, just before the holidays, sent them an official award letter and a draft of a contract. So their legal team has to review that. And once that's finished, they'll start work. So they're expecting early January to, to begin the project. They've asked, in the meantime, for me to start gathering some documents that will be helpful to them. So things like building plans, maintenance documents, that will help them with the assessment of the facility. So I'm gonna start doing that. So, yeah, hopefully in early January, we'll get things, the ball rolling on that. Let me see, there's a couple things. I'm gonna, well, this kind of ties in a little bit to the next thing, but we have to kind of think about when we might want them to come in front of the board for the first time. But I'll kind of jump to the next thing, so the building program schedule. So Ruth and I were talking, and she wanted us to consider several questions.
Before you go on, can I talk about the Odin's L.O. contract?
Yeah.
In the contract, are there terms for billing? My concern is that the foundation will be paying for some of the invoices. And right now, I think we have, we'll be getting more invoices from Ruth and get reimbursed from them. But we have 23, after the $31,000 invoice Ruth last sent, the balance of the $40,000 at Environmental Development AMOC was $23,200. And the balance has to be extended before June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that this company will be able to invoice us, you know, so we can use the money as planned and then...
Oh, yeah, well, the grant is, I mean, it's all gonna be done by the end of April because the grants do that.
The whole thing from Odin's L.O.?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It has to be done before the grants do and the end of May.
Oh, okay. I was gonna worry about that timing.
Yeah.
Problem solved.
Joe Harrington also said that if we don't meet the date, we can have, we can have to have this extended.
Oh, that's good to know, too.
Yeah, we should be all set with that.
Terrific.
So Ruth and I were talking, and there's a couple things we need to figure out. So she's planning on attending the January meeting of the board, which we just voted on for January 23rd, I believe it is.
Yes.
But she also thought we should set up a snow date for that, just because if she's coming, like, if that's not gonna work out. Because she's actually gonna be out of the country, the beginning of February to the beginning of April. She will have virtual access, but, yeah, Ruth. So I was thinking if the 23rd of January doesn't work, to bump it to the 30th and set that as a snow date, if that works for people.
January 20th, you set for a snow date?
The 30th.
30, oh, yeah, 30.
This is the following week, because there's five Tuesdays in January. So, you know, to set that as a date that could work. And then, let's see, what else did she wanted to see? What, she wanted to ask what, what kind of things did the board want her to... So she's gonna, well, she's gonna give an update on the building program. We actually hoping to have a draft. So the planning committee is gonna be reviewing the draft that we're working on now in early January, and, you know, really getting it cleaned up. So hopefully by the January meeting, we'll have a pretty good draft in place. But she wanted to know if you just wanted her to kind of just do a highlight of kind of what's going on, or did you want like a whole PowerPoint presentation? She kind of wanted to get like what your expectations were for that. So I don't know if anybody had...
Did we get a draft of it before it goes final?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, you'll be voting on it. So like, that's, that's one of the things, that's actually the next thing to talk about in terms of...
But like, could we get a draft before she gave whatever presentation she gave?
Yeah, we could, whatever the draft is in that...
But sometimes people want to present it first to you and then read it. But I find it helpful if I can read it first and then sort of listen to it.
Yeah, no, I think that's kind of what she had been thinking. We'll send you whatever draft we have, like, we're just gonna dance or whatever. But, I mean, I think, I mean, I'd be comfortable with just some of the highlights rather than like whole entire PowerPoint at that point.
Yeah, I agree.
So, okay, so I'll let her know that. Then in terms of the schedule for approving the draft, so she asked about, like, so a review of the draft may be done virtually in March. Well, I mean, you'd get a draft, we'd send it in before January, but then obviously it would need to be worked on more and cleaned up more. So as it gets closer, so maybe, she says, maybe done virtually in March and then adoption in April. But the April meeting is pretty close to Town meeting. So she wanted to see if it was possible to, we may need to have like another separate meeting in April to...
Does it get uppers at Town meeting? Why is that?
No, well, because it's, at Town meeting is gonna be requesting funds for the project and then...
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So she kind of wanted to get it done before...
If we get it in March, why can't we approve it? I mean, if we get it in January, why can't we approve it in March?
Well, it would still be worked on.
It'll be another two months working on it.
Yeah, I mean, this, right now, what we have is, I mean, it's a draft, but it's still, like, there's still a lot more to be done. So it's like, there's gonna be kind of stages for it. So we need to have the planning committee look at it, and then we need, like, and the board will look at it, and then we'll kind of have to go back and forth a bunch, so...
And you have to do the article in March to ask for the money.
For, in May, yeah, in May, yeah.
And so, right now, we have April 23rd. So do you want to move, I mean, the week before, I think it's a vacation week, it's kind of out of...
Yeah, no, I think, because she was thinking, she said, let's see, maybe a special meeting to adopt in April, like, even if we did something, maybe like the 9th, like before the foundation meeting?
Sure.
Or just have another totally separate meeting. But, but I guess she was asking if that timeline sounds like it could work. Initially, the draft would be done virtually in March. Because she can, like, she'll have access virtually.
Well, I feel we have to say yes because we have to...
Yeah, I mean, we can talk more when we, if, when she comes to the January meeting, but just maybe thinking about what might work.
I mean, are we talking about moving the April meeting to the 9th?
No.
And she presents first so that we have only one meeting now?
No, she'll be presenting in January, like, just what we have, like, kind of where things are at now, and then...
We would be reviewing it in April, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, you do like a preliminary review if, the January meeting, but then, as it's worked on more, you know, usually you want to review it like in depth in one meeting and then vote on it at the next meeting. So if we're voting on it in like early, at a separate meeting in April, you'd be reviewing it in March, probably, like a pretty close draft to the final.
I'm wondering with the importance of it. And a lot of times, we do end up with suggestions after the final review. If we might even change our, our date, the trustee meeting to the 16th of April, so it isn't a rushed process, have plenty of time to discuss it and amend it, and it'd be ready and plenty of time for Town meeting.
Well, that's vacation week. I don't know if that would be an issue for...
Is it an issue with anyone?
For Tuesday, I'm not entirely sure, but maybe...
That's why I said the 9th.
It might work out okay. I just, we're still talking about it.
Okay, well, maybe, I mean, we can talk more about in March, in, in January, maybe with Ruth, and see what she, she thinks, but...
Our vote is, is any good for people? Like, it might be rushed with the foundation leaving, I'm concerned.
Well, I mean, at this point, it would just be like the vote, I guess, is that... Like, it wouldn't be, like, the review stuff would be done before.
We've all done that, we just need to vote.
It would just basically be a need to vote, like, yeah, to vote on it.
And we could even do that online, right? We could even do it on Zoom meeting, if it, if they had to. Just wanted to do it during the vacation.
Right, yeah.
Like, we're not going out of the country, so I could call in from wherever.
Okay.
So on the agenda for next month, we'll firm up April's date.
Right, okay. All right, next is, so Town meeting preparation. So Ruth is also asked about, kind of have us start thinking about what we want to do in, you know, in addition to the, the vote for the, for the funds. Do we want to do any sort of, like, do we want Ruth to do like a brief presentation? Do we want to have like some, or some other community meeting or like some flyer or, I guess, is there...
Well, we could have a flyer. We could put together a flyer to hand out when everyone gets that, their package.
Or like a mailing even in advance, but I think maybe just a flyer.
I think would be fine because last time it was supposed to be 10 minutes and it was like 35 minutes. And you're riling up the people.
Right.
I don't think that's a good idea because we want them on our side.
Yeah, I think maybe just like a flyer that people take in the package.
And then we can start posting that flyer in places as well, like, yeah. We put it on Facebook and Instagram. We put it at, you know, Town Hall and a few other places.
What's happening?
Oh, it's a movie.
They have lots of movies.
Yeah.
Oh, I was wondering that too.
What is the movie?
I forget.
It's a horror movie.
Oh, it's the Murder in Dennis with Tom Branagh. Or whatever, it's something of Dennis.
Yeah.
I don't think we want a presentation as we were discussing at Town meeting, but would we want Ruth to offer to put together one that she could show to the selectmen? And it would be broadcast and people would know what they're voting for if they watched the presentation.
You mean, like, before then?
Yeah, before Town meeting. I don't know, possibly.
Well, we could ask to have it at a selectman's meeting and I could go to do the presentation, you know, say a few words, no more than 10-minute presentation.
Yeah, because they have packed schedules.
Yes, they do. But you'd have to...
Yeah.
You would have to, like, get that now.
Yeah.
Especially with Town meeting, because that's a big thing. I mean, I'd be happy to talk to Laura too, but usually for April, the Town meeting is probably, I don't know, I think in elections, May 6th, probably, the Monday, the first Monday. I would think it's May 6th.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So in April, they usually have extra meetings.
Right.
So maybe we could go at the beginning of April, like the 2nd or the 9th.
So, yeah.
On the select board meeting.
Yep.
And, I mean, if there's some other meeting going here, foundation, I could, I would just go to the select board and say a few words. They'd show the presentation, and then if the people there have any questions, I can answer the questions. Because we have to keep getting this in front of everyone's face, basically.
Right, right. So you think to have Ruth put together a brief PowerPoint that we could...
Yep.
Like a five-minute PowerPoint.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then the opportunity to ask questions and have her answer the question.
Yeah. And, yeah, and we could post it online and...
Right, yeah, put it on that.
It's a little bit show cages.
Yeah, Facebook.
Cable.
But the goal is not to show the PowerPoint at Town meeting.
No, no, no.
To get people to see it before Town meeting happens and we ask for money.
Like, when I, I don't go to select board because, that much anymore because it's usually conflicting with something else. But there's usually myself and one other person who I would call, we're the regulars. Most of the time, it's just the board, the town council, if she's required. But a lot of people watch it.
Yeah.
Because they tell me, you know, "Oh, you know, I saw you," or whatever. So more people watch it than I thought.
I'll get in touch with Ruth.
One other thing, I think, for Town meeting, could we have a design a flyer for people?
Yeah, we just talked about that, doing a flyer, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. At the town meeting.
Yes, to hand out at town meeting, to have available for people to pick up.
I'll hand it out. Well, put it with the packet. You can always walk around saying, did you catch your, make sure they picked it up.
All right, uh, next is, um, role of the, it should be library planning committee, actually, so library planning committee, um. So, as I said, they're gonna be, um, reviewing, early January, reviewing the draft that we currently have, um, and giving us their feedback, um, on that. Um, I think we said by January eighth, um, to have them do that. Then, um, they're gonna also review the final draft, like, a final draft, which actually she says late February, early March. Um, and then, so she asked, do we want the committee to submit a recommendation for adoption to the board of trustees after they review the final draft? I don't know that that's necessary. Um, I mean, I think they'll get it to a state where they've reviewed it and then that would just be submitted to the board for review and, and voting. Um, I don't necessarily see that they need to do a recommendation, but if anybody feels otherwise, that that's important. Um, so then, after that, too, she said, you know, she wants, she kind of wants the planning committee to still be helpful in the process of possibly getting funding, so, um, you know, are, she said, are there any, like, promotion efforts they could do, um, who would lead that? Um, maybe even get like the junior members from the planning committee to spruce up the plan with graphics, um, but in terms of like promotion, um, you know, what, I guess, kind of, they start, maybe start thinking about having the planning committee kind of transition a little bit into helping us with some promotion efforts. Um, so if anybody has any ideas about that, um, we can, you know, send them to me and we can figure out what, um, cause she still wants them to be involved, kind of, once the, once the building program's adopted, to still be involved with the grant application. So she just wanted us to see if there was any ideas for, um, having them work on promotion, or what they could do, what could they be involved in. Um, I think that was all she had. Um, yes, nor any questions about any of that?
Maybe financial. Um, I'm not clear where all the money's coming from. Um, I know the town head indicated, maybe Lisa, that, um, they might not, they'd like some contributions towards the amount needed by the state. Um, do we have money set aside places, like the trust funds or anything? If the town didn't wanna come up with like the four hundred thousand or?
I think it's a hundred fifty, isn't it?
Oh, a hundred fifty, so they have to vote to, they have to vote to, um, appro- like, appropriate that amount.
The full amount, even if there's money in the trust fund that we might decide to use towards it, the town still has to vote for full amount?
I don't really tell anybody that there's funds in the trust fund.
Well, they.
Well, no, we, we have some trust funds we could possibly apply towards the hundred fifty.
So they have to vote to.
But they owe us the money from not getting the heating, the.
Right, well, that's one of the things I'm gonna talk to, I'm actually meeting with Lisa when she gets back and, or, um, the first week of January. So that's one of the things I'm gonna talk and try to see if we can firm up about using a hundred fifty thousand of the two hundred thousand each back that wasn't done toward. So that we kind of have that in place, but, um.
That was her offer, so she has.
So the way that the article's gonna be worded, um, is that, so people have, that it has to be appropriated, but it doesn't necessarily say exactly, it doesn't say mu- municipal funds, it doesn't have to be, yeah, it doesn't exactly give a particular source, it just has to be like available funds, so, like, trust funds can be used, some municipal funds, a mixture, so, yeah, so it doesn't have to be, and it's not gonna be expended immediately, obviously, it's only if we actually get the grant and that's like further, that won't be till like early twenty twenty-five, right? So they don't actually have to, you know, we'll make that clear, that they don't actually have to spend the money right then and there, so, um, yeah. Um, all right, um, last thing is required grant documents. So this is another thing I'm gonna talk to Lisa about. Um, so in addition to, you know, the building program, the strategic plan and whatnot, for the, um, requirements for the grant, um, there are requirements that the town needs to do, so they need to provide us with, like, budgetary information, um, financial policies, um, you know, capital plan, things like that. So unfortunately, the town doesn't have financial policies that are required at the moment. So, and I did speak to Lisa a while back about this, um, she was gonna see if the new employee that they were getting was, could work a little bit on it, but, um, you know, she, I, I, I'm getting a little concerned by the fact that, you know, they haven't had time to work on these, um. When I spoke to Lisa, she said that, you know, she looked at, she briefly at some other towns that have them and like, there, some of them are pages long and, you know, I don't, she wasn't sure if legal counsel would be able to get them ready in time and, um.
By the May deadline?
By the May thirty-first deadline. So, and then the other thing is the, um, if we're considering a shared building, which right now, we don't really know what we're gonna have, um, we need to have an, what's called an official management plan, so if, say, we were gonna have a shared building with the senior center, um, we need to have a document that establishes, it says, um, governance, fiscal, and personnel management policies that are agreed upon by the municipality and the library. So it would basically be like a, like a, like a me- a memo of understanding between the library and the senior center about, like, the shared building, like, who's gonna share the spaces, how they're gonna be shared, financially, like, their custodian share, all that kind of stuff. Um, it, from, when I spoke to the MBLC, it is a document that a, a lawyer needs to draft. Um, like, I can't, we can't just make it up ourselves. Um, and again, I was a little concerned by the fact that town council is, and even just last, I heard that they were pretty behind on some other things that the town was working on, um. So I didn't know if we, I mean, but I, I will talk to Lisa about this and kind of see what, you know, what her thoughts are at this point, but I didn't know if we wanted to even consider, like, hiring our own person to try to draft some of this stuff.
But it's for the town, right?
Well, the policies, yeah, the policies, we can't really do much about, um, we can't draft policies for the town, obviously, as a whole.
Yeah, we shouldn't be doing it.
The management pro- uh, plan, that is something that it would be library and senior center, so we could do something, work on that.
Do you have samples of it?
That, it's fairly new, something that they're acquiring, so they don't have any, like, it hasn't been done before, really, so they don't have. Um, she, when I spoke to the MLC, she, like, it doesn't have to be too involved, it could be like several pages, like, with some, uh, um, like, you break down, like, you know, personnel, like landscaping, like custodian, like, things that are gonna be shared, like, meeting rooms, who's gonna be handling those, if there are any shared spaces, um, and how, like, you know, who would be handling, if there's problems come up, or, um.
Sounds like documents that could also end up being worked in progress, that consistently revised, you know?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, well, that's the thing too, we don't even know what.
The other thing, uh.
So wait, so there's the management, what else, aside from the town policies, the town should get its act together.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna talk to Lisa about that.
Tell her that, that if, if she can't commit to that, then, then this library trustees are gonna start talking to other people about that, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
It should not be held back, because the town doesn't have it together.
The other. Yeah, no, I totally agree. Um.
But wait, can I just get a list of the other, so the management?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
So there's the management plan and then, um, like, let me see, I think I had.
Shared space.
Well, um, there's like annual budgets, those are fine, I'm sure they can give us those, capital plans, I don't know if they have, like, capital.
They have to have a capital plan for the library.
Yeah. Um, things like they have certified free cash, like, do the stabilization fund balance levy cap, um, they can probably provide those. Um, the microzone was, yeah, the, um, obviously, long-term debt, um, debt services, bond ratings, so like borrowing and debt policies.
That's the town?
Yes, stabilization fund policies, free cash policies, and any other applicable financial policies.
Free cash policy, I'm sure they have. Borrowing debt, what was the second one?
Um, stabilization fund policies.
Which they have a stabilization, stabilization fund, but do they have a policy?
So borrowing debt.
Borrowing slash debt.
Stabiliz- borrowing.
Slash debt, and the stabilization fund and free cash. Those are the three specific, and then they just have a thing, any other applicable ones. Um, there's also have to work on funding scenarios, so the town has to kind of come up with some plan, like, three different scenarios, I think, for, um, how they could fund the construction project, um, like, their portion, it's, it's not covered by the grant. Um, so they have to come up with three different ways of, like, whether they're gonna borrow, or do they have some other fund somewhere, or taxation, or, you know, or prop- two, you know, two and a half, or whatever.
Probably be fifty percent, although the greener the building is, the more we can get from the state, but we don't know how much more.
Okay, but what are the policies that you were talking about for us to handle? The management one?
So the man, yeah, it's really just the management, um, official management plan.
Um, they couldn't show you one, that any other library's not, I don't know.
Uh-uh.
That's a shared management plan.
Yeah, so, like, it, yeah, it would be, like I said, between the library and I assume the senior center, if that's probably the only.
Is it, does no other libraries have entered into?
No, I think, cause it was, well, I mean, there might be some, but, I mean, it wasn't required by the grant before, cause they changed recently, for this round, they changed the grant requirements.
How come they don't have a?
So there might be some library out there that has one.
Like a draft of what it should, but they obviously know what they wanted to look at, how it's not out of town.
They should have something on file. You can adjust, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, it says, um.
A shell of.
That's.
It just says establishing governance, fiscal, and personnel management policies.
But when you think about it, is it really gonna run differently than now? You're in charge of your staff over in the library. Mary is in charge of her staff over there.
But as I told, they expected, this is, this is a document an attorney is going to draft, so.
Like, so, like, sort of like, like.
But yet they want you to take a, a shot in the dark of what that document is actually.
When I spoke to Andrea, she.
I mean, how do you tell an attorney what you want them to write?
Well, she, I know, she's kind of, she said, it's kind of like a memo of understanding, so, like, you would put in, like, so, a shared meeting room, for example. You would say, like, who's gonna be booking the use of the meeting room, like, the library would be handling that, maybe, say. And so you'd kind of write up some language about that, and then, like, the shared custodian, who, like, who's gonna be, like, so it'd be, like, on the library's payroll, which it is now. Like, you'd write something about that. Like, any landscaping, who's gonna be, like, if there's something on the grounds that needs taking care of, like, who would be handling that, who would be hiring?
So you have kind of the, the bullets that make up the document.
Right.
And you feel that, do you feel that you have enough current information on how this shared building is running to be able to fill in those bullets?
I think pretty much.
Not until at least that if it was then given to somebody to polish the document, to say, here you go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we can say kind of what we would want, and then they could write it up, but I don't know, the, we, we's obviously avoid, yeah, I mean.
Uh, but, yeah, and then again, it's one of those things that any document can be updated.
Right.
Well, I can, I can do the liberty, honestly, I can't believe there's not one out.
But we can.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe it would be helpful to speak to the, um, Andrea at the MBLC again, like, maybe both of us, and see, yeah, I can see it and.
Do you wanna sit up off? I'll, I'll do it right here, I'll, I'll, if you, shh, we get the bullets and then you write that, I'll put all the fancy words around it.
But the thing is, it can't be your law office, because.
It's not, it's me as the individual.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll, um.
Joint and fair shared facilities, that's just in libraries.
I mean, we, it says too, um, it mentions, um, the, the list of the departments to be housed in the shared building and a description of any overlap of services.
I think this is because this is about the funding availability, they only will fund.
Yes, they only fund the library portion, yet estimated portion of the building's net square footage dedicated to library services. Um, and then space allocated to.
Based on space for time utilization will be approved by the board.
I have a concern, I, I was hoping we wouldn't have to share space. You know, if the community room is available and you have, like, say, Green Hanson, that has no place to meet, so we meet at the police station. Like, they're a nonprofit, could use the spaces as a meeting. Um, the library works with them on an event or two. So, but I guess.
But this is just if we were to build something.
And we had to have a shared space.
Like, cause if we had to have a shared, right, I understand that, but I, I guess I'm just pulling it apart a little bit now, we'll talk in depth at another time. But if we're sharing a space, say we're sharing this space for what we have for now, they won't give us the funding for that shared space, probably, or give us a lot less.
So, well, the, the grant would cover anything library-specific and then a portion of, of shared area, and then, like, nothing for non-library.
Yeah. And I, I guess I'd like us to get.
Yeah, I mean, but we have to have the two different options that we don't know.
Right, no, I know we do.
Yeah.
But I think, I see what Karine's saying, though. If we renovated and built additional space, maybe offices, I guess we'd have to share the outside, but shared meeting rooms, we wouldn't necessarily have to include that in the program. We could have our own meeting spaces, maybe like the senior center do.
Yeah, well, that'd be. That would be ideal, we could put that in, but we don't know, like, I mean, we don't know what that might.
No, but again, what a lot, what, you know, if, if we built, like, a, a auditorium with a stage and comfortable seating for libraries only,
That's what we're building.
Hmm.
And then down the road changed our mind and decided to share it.
Well, if it's already built.
You're within a compartment, you can get it.
Well, and I'm thinking too, though, like, would people?
They are, there's rules, there's, they actually have very specific rules about shared space in terms of.
Well, um, like, say, if a particular meeting room would be probably designated trustee slash foundation, cause that's the place we're gonna meet.
Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't get shared with anyone, cause we have our stuff in there.
But I don't know if they would approve, like, like, if we had, like, a giant, one, a giant meeting room, they're probably not gonna have two giant, like, one for the senior center and one for the library, I don't know if people would.
Right. But they really don't, I know they need more space, but they'll, so, uh, we could be sharing a community center in between.
Who'd probably have to share some. I mean, we could always word it, like, if there are any shit, cause we wouldn't know, I mean, we can talk to Andrea too about, since it's so up in the air, like, how would we
Yeah. Right.
craft something when we don't know what a building's gonna look like, but, um, I mean, there could be language that if there are, if there is a shared meeting room, then this is what.
Right. Cause I guess, based on, sorry. I was just gonna say, and we've talked about this before, in the back of my mind, in my, yeah, my mind, like, we mentioned the custodian, we share the custodian. To me, fifty percent of his salary should be on the senior center's budget. It's not?
Well, well, no, it's, it's all just one budget, which is under our payroll, so, like, I do the payroll, like, submit the hours and everything each week.
For you too?
Yes, I, like, did the whole hours, but it's the one budget fund, which is just like.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
She's not paying a hundred percent, but giving half of.
Yeah, no.
Okay, that's, yeah, cause that's like a concern where, um, and who knows, you know? We have a new library, when we have our new library, um, we may be even busier and we may have to have, have a, a part-time custodian.
Well, I.
In addition, go ahead, Diane.
Um, as far as the current community room, which is shared, would you say that you could, based on past usage, get an idea of, are you sixty percent and there forty percent of the usage?
Yeah, we could definitely do that, so.
Are you, you know, like seventy, thirty, fifty, fifty, you know, you probably already know that this is what it is now. And let's say that room was three times bigger, it still would fall into the same.
The percentage is still gonna be the same, maybe, yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think you might have the information, you just kind of have to, you know, suck it all in together and, and put it into numbers.
Right. Exactly, yeah.
Okay, Linda?
I don't know how much we're looking to really share a building versus being adjacent. And I don't even know, if we're expanding, probably double the space, are we gonna be sharing a custodian? Is that the plan down the road? I don't think we know all these things, but it doesn't really make sense to say who we are.
No, those things, but, right now, we. No, but at the same time is, more than likely, they're not gonna increase the budget for the library, so you're not going to get more staff, you're not going to. It'll have to come at another time. You know, maybe six months after the library is done, then you start going for those items. I don't, you're not going to get everything at once, this.
I mean, I think it would be helpful then to talk, when we talk to Andrea, to ask her, since, you know, our, obviously, our goal is to get us, our own space, but,
Yeah, I actually, yeah. Yes.
Um, if, you know, how do we just, how do we determine then, if we do have to do a shared, like, how does that happen? So I think, I think we need to ask her, kind of, since it's so up in the air, like, what, um, and then do, maybe, you know, maybe we just submit as a single individual building and not do the shared route at all.
So that the library.
But what would that mean if we didn't get approved for, through town, you know, the town?
We might, the timing is interesting, you know, on the, on the study by, it might come out that a new building is so much more cost effective because of the costs of renovating up the code and the energy costs of operating and if we knew that, it would be helpful, but we don't. You know, so it's very frustrating.
I mean, it's not, it's up to the town, but I mean, Mary's will be involved, I mean. I, I wanna push for us to have our own library and they can renovate this for them. She'll have all the space, I mean, she told the two of us, she's mentioned that several times.
Ample space.
Yeah, yeah.
So um, I just sent the, the Massachusetts Library Page, they, they referenced this section that talked, that's the requirement, but they also then cite to a book. I just sent you a screenshot of it.
Oh, okay.
It says joint use libraries.
Okay.
But maybe we, maybe you could take it out from the library. And we could take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, so absolutely.
Because they might have samples of that.
Right, okay, good, thank you. All right, um, I think that's.
And I learned the difference, this joint library is when two libraries come together, shared library space is when you have a library and another user. So what we're talking about is shared.
Right, yeah, yeah, because yeah, there's a other town or anything, yeah. All right, I think that's all I had.
If we've kinda separated operation except for custodian and outside, do we still have to call it shared?
Well, I think what we're gonna say, we're gonna have the conversation to say, look, we don't know what kind of building we want, we might have one. But if one of the scenarios that the, the town comes up with is a shared space, should we have a draft shared agreement? Draft, being the operative word, for that, or should we just go in strongly and say, we're not sharing space? I just don't, I wouldn't wanna supply and then for us to actually, you know, get it passed through town.
Right.
Yeah, let's keep our options open, so let's see what we have to do.
But I see it more as adjacent, not really shared building. We might be forced to share resources of personnel, a custodian.
They talk about like H VAC bathrooms, like how do you portion those costs?
Yeah, but now, well.
Build our own, that's what I'm saying, but.
Well, yeah, that's what we're going for, is we have our own building, but if the town doesn't vote for it, we might not have any choice, you know? Of course, then we would need more bathrooms, we'd need more space, but the other thing is, they use our community room, they use the community room here. Okay, I don't know how often they use it. Just that space alone is not that big of a room that if, well, if they would just have this whole building, they'd be all set. If we had a new shared building, they could have a room like that, maybe a little bigger and have dividers for smaller things going on.
Well, they do, so one of the, the three things you have to confirm for a shared building is the library will have a dedicated program room, so at least one, it could be more, but at least one dedicated program room. The library will have dedicated restrooms.
Yeah.
And the library will have dedicated controls for lighting and H VAC.
Right, and our own septic?
There's just those three.
Oh.
Doesn't have to be.
Okay.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's another thing, so like you'd have to probably share septic, you know, um.
So when did you talk to Lisa about the policies, those town help vote?
Well, originally it was Wednesday, but then I just got a thing earlier about, from, for Tuesday, so I'm gonna have to check with her. Whether she wanted me to come in on Tuesday or Wednesday. But I can let you know, I'll show, double check with her, because that might be helpful for you to be there too. I think she sent me Tuesday, the second at eleven, maybe. Originally it was gonna be Wednesday at nine, but um, I don't know if you're available, Tuesday at eleven? Okay. Well, what about Wednesday at nine, I could always. You could do Wednesday at nine, okay, I'll check with her then, see what.
I'm gonna talk to Pepper too about those policies, because the finance committee should be binding by certain policies like that. He's on the finance committee?
Okay, good, yeah, that'd be great. Okay, um, so that's all I had, so next meeting, January twenty-third.
Yep, with.
And Ruth will be joining us.
In case of the snow day, you'll be the thirty.
Or thirtieth, it's a snow day, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the Board of Library Trustees' notice of meeting, um, December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifty-one.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Oh, seven forty-one.
Seven forty.
Forty-one, all right.